All right, the regular meeting of the Belleflower City Council is called to order on Monday, November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, at five, at six oh four P M. Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Coops?
Here.
Councilmember Denton?
Here.
Councilmember Morse?
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Here.
Mayor Santinas?
Here. Item number three, a closed session. Mr. Stewart?
This is Conference of Real Property Negotiator, one item, which is eight-eight-three-three Cedar Street, Belleflower, negotiators, myself, negotiating party Vicki Dewey of Senior Property Manager, Melton Management, and under negotiation price in terms of payment.
Okay, does anyone have any conflicts on this item?
I do, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I have property within the vicinity there, so I won't be participating.
Okay, let the record reflect that Mayor Protem Coops is recusing himself on item three. Anyone else? Okay, and I don't see anyone here from the public to speak on this item, so with that, we will recess to closed session. Good evening, Belleflower. The regular meeting of the Belleflower City Council is called to order on Monday, November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, at seven oh two P M. We are reconvening from, from closed session, and there are no reportable actions taken during the closed session. Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Coops?
Here.
Councilmember Denton?
Here.
Councilmember Morse?
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Here.
Mayor Santinas?
Here. Tonight's invocation will be led by Councilmember Wendy Morse, and the municipal legends will be led by PJ Melana, Director of Parks and Recreation. Please rise.
Can we all bow our heads? Lord, I come before you, and I ask for a special blessing for our veterans, as we've remembered the sacrifices they have made for the freedoms we have today. I ask for a special measure of safety for our first responders and law enforcement, as they protect and serve our city. Be with our city staff and my fellow council members, as we work together to serve the best interests of our community. In your name I pray, amen.
Amen.
Please place your right hand over your heart and join with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Wendy, and thank you, PJ. Let me start with city council announcements. Mark your calendars, the annual Christmas lighting ceremony is scheduled to take place on Friday, December first, at six thirty P M. in downtown Belleflower, near Friendship Square. Local residents and neighboring communities are invited to this free event, filled with carolers, craps, and real snow sledding. Santa Claus will be, will make a special appearance and meet with children to take a photo and listen to their holiday wishes. For more information, please call five-six-two-eight-zero-four-one-four-two-four, extension two-two-six-one. Mayor Protem Dan Coops?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To piggyback on your holiday gesture there, we're going to show your holiday spirit by decorating the outside of your home and competing in the City of Belleflower's Holiday Home Decorating Contest. Nominations are now open, and all entries must be received by four o'clock on Thursday, November thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. The contest committee will be judging nominated properties on the week of December the fourth. The winning homes will be recognized with a lawn sign and a certificate of recognition from the mayor and our city council. This program is open to Belleflower residents and single-family homes only. For more information, please call five-six-two-eight-zero-four-one-four-two-four, extension two-one-zero-three. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Dan. Councilmember Ray Denton?
Thank you, Mayor. The Belleflower Volunteer Center is working closely with residents, community groups, schools, service clubs, and organizations to provide Christmas food boxes and/or gift cards to the families in the need. Gift cards, monetary donations, canned goods, and gifts for children can be donated to the, and will need to be received by Thursday, November thirtieth. For more information and the details, please call five-six-two-eight-zero-four-one-four-two-four, extension twenty-three-three-one. Thank you.
Thank you. Ray, Councilmember Wendy Morse?
Thank you, Mayor. The city is currently in the process of creating a Parks and Recreation Master Plan to provide a modern vision for the parks and recreation system in Belleflower. The plan will provide guidance for future improvements and the development of new parks, recreational facilities, and programs. The next two workshops will be held in the Sims Park Auditorium on Tuesday, November twenty-eighth, and Thursday, November thirtieth, from six P M. to eight P M. Come on out to learn more and provide your input on the future of Belleflower's parks and recreation programs and facilities. For more information, please visit www.bellflowerparksplan.com, or call five-six-two-eight-zero-four-one-four-two-four, extension two-two-six-seven. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Wendy. Councilmember Victor Sanchez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Belleflower. The Belleflower Chamber of Commerce invites businesses, service clubs, and the community to join their next monthly morning mingle, which will take place on Tuesday, November twenty-eighth, from nine A M. to ten A M. For more information, please call the Belleflower Chamber of Commerce at five-six-two-eight-six-seven-one-seven-four-four. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Victor. For tonight, we have one presentation. It is for the Family Court Awareness Month proclamation. This is the proclamation. It is proclaiming the National Family Court Awareness Month for the month of November. Unfortunately, Ms. Sandy Ross could not make it to this meeting, so this certificate proclaiming this month as the National Family Court Awareness Month will be mailed to her directly. All right, moving along, we have one other presentation for tonight is from Kair Solis. Mr. Stewart?
We have Mr. Chad Castreita tonight here to give a presentation to the city council on the Kair Solis and the progress they've made in the community.
Good evening, councilmembers. Chad Castreita, Kair Solis. Here to give an update on our program in three short months. Just to explain kind of where we're at, we launched our mental health service August of this year. Our first case came in about six days right when we launched. This is up through effective as of today. We have a total of, let me just circle out of this here. We have a total of seventy-four cases. Out of the seventy-four cases, we have thirty-eight appointments into care. We'll break down this further here in details with the dive-down details of the seventy-four cases and thirty-eight appointments. Of the thirty-eight appointments, six have been serious mental health illness. So those are the more intensive issues and concerns that lead to hospitalization, stabilization, fifty-one-fifties, residential inpatient. So those six cases, I'll break that down further as well. What it's taken in our team, we have a care companion team, if we recall last time we spoke, we have a twenty-four-by-seven team that services L.A. County. We have, we've made two thousand eight-hundred-and-sixty-four phone calls to providers in the community. Total communications back and forth with residents, we do all the follow-through, and it takes about forty phone calls per case. Each case takes about fifteen minutes, so it's about seven-hundred-and-sixteen hours worth of work. Next slide. So, want to break this down. We've have, since we met, we've now serviced the city of Montebello and the city of Lakewood since we last spoke, that has our service in place. We actually go to council tomorrow with the city of Paramount. But what we talk about is this, how do we measure success? And, and what police chiefs and law enforcement officers have asked us to do is to measure our total case throughput based on the serious mental health untreated issues. And so Belleflower, if you look at the data in the state of California under the Department of Health Services, you have a population of seventy-seven thousand, roughly. Estimated cases of SMI in this city is roughly about seventy-three hundred serious mental health illness cases on an annual basis, roughly. The caseload for untreated SMI, these are folks that do not get care at all, is twenty-six-hundred-and-eleven as of, this is as of two thousand twenty-one. This is updated on an annual basis, but as of twenties, as of two thousand twenty-one, total caseload for untreated is two thousand six-hundred-and-eleven, and the cost is six thousand six-hundred-and-eight per case in the state of California for untreated SMI. That leads to suicides, homelessness, and so on and so forth, E R. visits, and things like that. So, the, the monitoring of that, the annual exposure and cost factors, about seventeen million in this city for untreated SMI. The dollar figure that we charge cities in the community is a dollar fifty per resident. The total cost for our services on our annual basis is roughly about a hundred grand, one-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand dollars. What we look at is a break even. What does that mean? How do we actually break even? And so when we look at our utilization in the early phases of our service, we need to treat eighteen cases of SMI. We need to, to act, bring services to those eighteen cases to break even. So that's less than one percent of a total utilization. So it's really, really conservative for us. Typically, we see anywhere between one and three percent on a quarter-to-quarter basis, but point-six-seven is the break-even point. So that's, that kind of lays it out. If we can, if we can just prevent one suicide, one fifty, one fifty, the, the service pretty much pays for itself. That's how we look at this. That's how police officers have asked us to measure this. D S M five categories. So of all the seventy-four cases, I want to break this down for the city of Belleflower specifically. If you look on the left, that's, those are the issues in the community of those seventy-four cases. So trauma is the number-one leading factor in this community at twenty-six-point-eight percent of those seventy-four cases, followed by anxiety, followed by depression, followed by family and marital counseling, followed by A D H D., and so on and so forth. Suicide's about one, one to one-and-a-half percent. The treatment types, you'll see that therapy is the leading factor here for services, people requesting services so far in the last three months, a fifty-eight-point-seven. But what's interesting to see is the inpatient category is eleven-point-five percent. People that need drug abuse clinics, substance use disorder concerns, that need residential stays for both psychiatric and drug abuse-related concerns. That's eleven-point-five percent. So we're monitoring that, and that's something we monitor throughout L.A. County currently with, with the partnerships that we have in place. But that is your snapshot on pathways and the issues in the last three months facing the community. As we break down this even further, of the seventy-four cases that we served, it's seventy-five percent or seventy-six percent are for adults, but also ten-point-eight percent are seniors that needed service. Young adults, six-point-two percent, adolescents, three-point-one, older children, three-point-one, and so on and so forth. Social services, we had five cases in addition to the mental health folks that needed free medical, free dental, food, and shelter, those types of things. We had five cases mixed in those seventy-four cases. Seventy-five percent of those cases were for adults, twenty-five percent for seniors. Mental health service requests broken down by gender, female, sixty-seven percent of all those cases are, are, are females that needed support. One-point-five percent were seeking non-binary related services, male, thirty, thirty-point-eight. Ethnicity, obviously Hispanic's a driving factor, but we have the African-American community, twenty percent, seeking services, speaking specifically, needing specifically black therapists and things like that. So that's really, really important. Asian population, ten-point-eight percent of all those cases were for, were for the Asian community, and, and then kind of broken down by N A., people that decided not to mention their ethnicity in our service pre-screening. Gender and ethnicity is broken down by social services. You can see that. Female, fifty percent, male, fifty percent. White and, and Hispanic, you can see kind of the, the percentages there, and did not want to disclose their ethnicity for social services. Mental health substance used by insurance type, of all the cases, thirty-six-point-nine percent were private insurance, forty-seven-point-seven percent public insurance, no insurance, fifteen-point-four percent. That's really important note. These are people that don't have insurance that need services. So super important, we're able to find, identify, match, and, and obviously turn it over to the family member to make that final decision. So this looks at insurance type. And then one of the things, the key takeaways in just the three months that we've been delivering this service is, you know, we, we, in, in every launch, we do a big splash, you know, social media and your websites and things like that. That kind of gets the ball rolling, but it takes, it takes a while to get people familiar with our service, right? It, it takes time. And so one of the things that we just launched, this, this actually came was, was, was the idea of the folks at Lakewood, the city of Lakewood, is to build a Q R. code. So they didn't have the time to continue to market and, and, and provide the marketing services out to the community, so they wanted just to promote on their social media a simple Q R. code that links people to a live person if they need services. So we built this Q R. code, and it's now in Montebello, and we would like to launch that here. We think that's something that would help people quickly get connected to services as opposed to just getting linked to our website and just trying to find services on their own through our website, which is how we have it set up now. So the Q R. code is, is something that we think is, is showing real, real promise for us, and want to, want to make sure that that's delivered here. Travis can, can get that into the hands of your community, into your channels. We feel like that's going to help people get connected quicker to a live person via text, via video chat, or via phone. And that's, that's the update from my end.
All right, thank you, Chad, for your report. I have a couple of questions. When did you start Lakewood?
I believe we started
Before or after Belleflower?
It's a good question. I, I think after.
After?
Or right around the same time. Something, it's right around the same time. I don't have the exact time, sir. I don't know.
Because we, you mentioned we started in August.
Yeah, I think so. So it's right around the same time.
About the same time. How about, how about Montebello?
Montebello before.
Before?
Yeah, I believe so.
Okay. So how, how would you compare in terms of the access rate between Belleflower and Montebello at this point in time?
I mean, we're just getting started, right? So we're in the first quarter. So it's, it's about comparable to, to Montebello and to Lakewood. We just had our review with the city manager and the management team at Lakewood. Very happy with our early-quarter review. Montebello, with Arlene there, just getting started, and she's tasked us to work with their homeless team, so we've been working with them to get the Q R. code enhanced. A lot of it's just been the setup and onboarding in Montebello, but we're, we're off to a good start. Arlene would, is someone you want to speak to there. She's the city manager there at Montebello.
Okay, okay, we will do that.
Yeah.
In terms of promotion, what kind of medium have you used so far for Belleflower?
I'm, I'm not too sure. You want to ask Travis. I, I'm not too sure what medium you've used.
There's a billboard, for one, and then the, the website?
Right.
What else?
Yeah, we did a mass mailer that went out to all the households in Belleflower, and then we also did a press release and social media posts, and then the billboard, as you mentioned, as well.
Hmm, okay, okay. And then you mentioned about the Q R. code. How do you disseminate the Q R. code?
Through similar channels. I mean, we, we think that the social media is, tends to get the most open rates and the click-throughs. People typically don't come to a city website to look for mental health services, but it's through social media and the community, through, through the communities, the community department is, is a big way we get the word out. That seems to be resonating, but the Q R. code seems to be working a lot better than just the CareMatch link that we have, and we disseminated through Belleflower.
Hmm, okay.
Yes, sir.
And one of the charts you, you showed us, there is a, a social service. I'm just kind of curious what page that. Social service request by age group, seventy-five percent adults, and then twenty-five percent seniors?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So how did you refer them to social service agencies? What kind of, what kind of service were they looking? You mentioned about homeless?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So it goes in four categories. I can do some follow-up and get the actual breakdown for you, but it's in four categories. It's free dental, free medical, food, or shelter. It's just those four categories we focus on.
Okay.
And we just launched in L.A. County, transportation. It's a new category for us, and, and that would be embedded in this relationship, but it wasn't up and running when we launched here in, in Belleflower. But now we have transportation for those folks.
I'm very curious to know, especially for homelessness, because you know, we have a homeless shelter.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, very good.
Yes, sir.
Any question for Mr. Castreita?
Other question.
Mayor Protem Coops?
So the additional way of promoting the Q R. deal, will that be included in the price that you quoted, or is that an additional fee?
No, it's included, sir. Yes, sir.
That's all I've got right now.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Denton?
All right. Thank you. Can you put up the, what, the second slide? It's the, where it has a census population? And the estimated cases within our city is seventy-three hundred and change? How do we determine that?
Yeah, through the, it's, it's tier-three concerns, through dispatch. So it's all recorded by Department of Health Services, but it's all through L.A. County. It's Department of Mental Health, reported back up to the Department of Health and Human Services in the state of California. They come out with an annual report that looks at SMI broken down by zip code, and this is as of two thousand twenty-one. This is
So by zip code?
Yes, sir. By zip code, by city, by, by city, though, specifically.
Zip code or city, because the zip code goes in other cities.
Yeah, but you'll see, this is specifically, we pulled for Belleflower.
This is just pulled Belleflower.
This is your, this is your, this is your range.
And then the untreated, how do we, how do we know about the untreated, the twenty-six hundred? Is that twenty-six hundred out of the seventy-three hundred?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's all the folks that, it's based on dispatch, right? So it's all, all the folks that were dispatched under the L.A. County Sheriff's Department or local police department that either are in services or brought to services through a fifty-one-fifty, or were not taken to services.
So either the fire department or sheriff, or, or some of the support groups, like the city hires, like King of Cazes, stuff like that?
Exactly, sir, exactly.
And none of these are duplicated?
What's that mean?
Oh, well, it's been our experience, or my experience, that somebody that's fifty-one-fifty can get picked up several times. Is it, is this data, are we sure this data is not filtered where they're duplicates? Because I know we have that trouble also with homeless council and stuff.
Yeah, that, that I don't know, sir. I'm just pulling from the, from the L.A. County Department of Mental Health and the Health and Human Services Agency in the state. That's, that's, that's how we, we show the data.
Got it.
That's all, that's all we go by.
And the big question that is the seventeen million dollars?
Yeah.
That, you basically says the estimated cost of untreated S M I in the city of Belleflower.
Yeah.
And I'm guessing that's some kind of stat that comes from when the fire department rolls, the parent depart, you know, whatever, because this is, this number, you know, is only three months, correct?
No, no, no. This month, this, this is for an annual. This is annualized.
This is annual?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I thought it was a three-month snapshot.
Oh, no, no, no. This, this, this report is, this report is based on annual. Yes, sir. This is an annual report.
The bar graphs we saw were, was it three-month snapshot?
Yeah, we only launched in August, so if you go back here, this, this is, this is, this is since August, and this is, this is annualized. This, this chart is annualized as of, as of two thousand twenty-one was the last data that they put out.
I, I think, Ray, I think what they did is multiply two thousand six-eleven times six thousand six-oh-eight?
Yes, sir.
Now, okay, because I was trying to divide, multiply, nothing seemed to work.
Yeah.
But it's a sixty
So they, they took the estimated cost for untreated S M I, and then they estimated the number of annual costs for, for individuals.
But if we, okay, the, the twenty-six hundred is the ones that untreated?
Yes, based on estimate, based on estimate.
That's, that's, that's as of two thousand twenty-one. It, it, but typically, what we've seen and what's been reported is, it's about the same. It's give or take another two-hundred to two-hundred-and-fifty cases, up or down, in a given year. So it's right around that number, roughly.
So the untreated cases, there's a cost only because they're not, they're the repeat offenders, possibly?
Repeat offenders, yeah. It's, it's one of the, it's one of the biggest issues, right?
Yeah, just tell me, this is new to me, so
Yes, sir.
New to everybody up here, really, because this is just three months old.
I understand.
On the, the seventy-three hundred number, which is the cases, we don't know if those are repeat offenders, though, probably.
They, they may, they may be some repeats in there.
Yeah, in there, right?
There may be. I, I just don't know how many, sir.
Yeah, okay.
But, but I can try to find that for you, for sure. I just don't know how many duplicates.
These, these numbers are huge, is why I'm asking questions.
They're big throughout the L.A. County. That's, this is, if you, if you break down from Hacienda La Puente to San Gabriel, to, to Compton, to Redondo Beach, the, the numbers are, the numbers are pretty significant.
These are Belleflower's numbers. I can imagine what others' numbers were.
Yes, sir.
That's all I have right now, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the answers.
Yeah, thank you.
Just to clarify, the sixty-six hundred cost, that's a statewide average?
That's a statewide average, sir. Yes, sir. That's for all S M I, yeah.
Okay, very good. All right, Councilmember Victor Sanchez?
I'm okay at this time, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Morse?
Questions?
Okay. I guess, thank you so much for the presentation. We look forward to the next presentation.
And my, my, I just want to let you know, last time I made a mistake with the school district, if you recall, and I, and I apologize, but I'm, I'm, I'm talking to Dr., I know you mentioned it last time, Victor, talking to Dr. Drahti this Thursday, will be my second meeting. If we move forward them, I'll, I'll take out the, their student population out of your, your, your ongoing price, sir. Thank you.
If you recall, Mayor Protem Coops was a fan of yours until that, until that evening.
I know. Oh, that was, that was a big, it was a big learning experience for me, so I appreciate it, thanks. No, I just wanted to, I wanted to, I wanted to be transparent. I appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you again.
Yeah, yes, sir. Thank you.
All right, next item, public comments. Mr. Stewart?
Thanks, sir. This is the time set aside for the public to address the city council on matters not listed on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the city council should come to the podium, be recognized by the mayor, and state your name for the record. If you wish to address the city council on an agenda item, you may do so by approaching the podium as we review that particular item. You'll be given three minutes to address the city council.
If you'd like to speak on another agenda item, please come forward, sign in, and state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Esther. What I would like to talk about is what I've learned about the Hawaii fires is that the fireman, the chief fireman turned the water off, and they had the most sophisticated siren system in the United States, and no one got anything on their cell phone, and it was not tripped off. The siren system was not tripped off. No one heard a siren. A thousand children are still missing. I can send you the evidence and the videos on this with the governor talking, the mayor talking, the chief of police talking, and the chief of firemen talking. I want to make sure that if anything, and also, they're pretty sure, they're, they're showing evidence that these were directed weapons. These are directed weapons. In other words, they come down from above and they start the fires, which shows why we still have green trees, but the, but the houses are gone, but we still have green trees, and they still have garbage cans that are made out of plastic, and they're still there. And also, it shows that the, that these billionaires, these multi-billionaires, all their property is, was never missing. Their property, it shows their property's still there, but the properties around it are burnt to the ground. I want to make sure this doesn't happen to our city. They're saying that, if you know anything about fifteen-minute cities, smart cities, they wanted to get rid of these people because they want to, they want to turn it into a smart city. They only gave these people seven hundred dollars. That's all they gave them, and they wouldn't even let them go back to look at their property. And I will send you the email of a video that has all this verified, two hours and forty-six minutes. I would appreciate it if all of you would look at this, and we need to make a decision here and now, that that's not going to happen to Belleflower. Thank you.
Esther, please provide the information to our city clerk. All right, thank you.
Excuse me?
Provide the information to our city clerk.
Ah, yes. When I get that email, I, I will send it to all of your personal
No, to the city clerk, so she'll be responsible for sending it to us, okay?
Okay, and what's her name?
City clerk, there's, you have an email address?
The city clerk?
Okay, it's on the agenda, I believe so. Okay, all right, thank you so much. Anyone else?
Good evening.
Good evening.
City council. My name is Roger Mendez. I'm
Did you, have you signed in?
Oh, signing in.
Please sign in.
Good evening. I am Roger Mendez. I'm the owner of Mister Menudo out here in the city of Belleflower. We've been out here for almost two years. It'll be two years in October. We've been out here for almost two years, um, it'll be two years in October, actually, it was two years. Uh, but I'm here with you, with you guys today because I'm trying to see if we could, uh, get a, a permit, uh, for the outside dining of our restaurant. Uh, we have a small little takeout place, but, uh, our residents are asking, uh, if we could still keep the dining out there for them because, um, they enjoy the, the outside dining, and it'll be beneficial for them. They like to eat their, their food nice and warm. Um, I've had, um, some issues with the code enforcement, where they come out and give us citations, and it continues to happen. Uh, been like two to three weeks it continues to happen, so we're asking if that could be an exception, if we could give, uh, maybe like, an exception for like ten people to sit out there and enjoy their food. We do have a designated area for them to sit, um, and that's why I'm out here for today, to try to make that exception and see if it's possible. Because the citations just continue to go and keep on coming and coming, and we're just trying to make the community a better place and try to bring in more, more customers from all different cities. We do get a lot of people on the weekend, um, from different areas, and I think it benefits the city of Bellflower for us to have the dining because it's, um, there's just people from these different cities coming, buying food, going and, and buying gas, uh, gas, or stopping at the supermarket. So, if you guys could help us out with that, uh, it'd be, uh, be very beneficial for us.
Have you worked with our planning department?
Uh, I have asked, I spoke to, with them once. Um, we really didn't give them to an agreement, uh, they just said no. But if we could work something else, I'm more, I'm more welcome.
I'll meet with them, Miss Oben, I'll meet with them next week, so Travis, get his name and address, and I'll meet with them. We'll sort it out.
All right.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Butts, we haven't seen you for quite some time.
Yes, it's been a little while, but I'm here tonight.
All right, good to see you.
Over a couple items that started here prior, when I was listening to this gentleman, this homeless situation. It's so far out of hand, it's pathetic in this town, more so than any of the surrounding cities. Well, I've got seven police reports in so far this year, all of our homeless. Or six right now. The seventh I haven't turned in because nothing seems to be done with the police department, our illustrious sheriffs. Because all they see is, you gotta have proof. Well, I've got proof, but they don't want to listen to nothing. So, I've dealt with the DA. I actually know of three girls and three guys that have committed fifteen percent of the crime here in Bellflower, and I've turned those names into the sheriff. And I have the proof of information just on here. With them admitting with their own diary, and I've arrested one, a girl. And unfortunately, I opened her little backpack and found my passport in there. And everything else, and checks from other people's places. But with that report, the sheriff said, "You called over your stolen vehicle. You're going to have to call somebody else for this one." Now, this is our illustrious sheriff's department. Well, you need to get with the county and clean up this riverbed. The camp down there is growing, just like LA. And that's where the major part of your crime is, coming right out of that riverbed. You know it, I know it. And going in the back way to the riverbed, from the back of your place, Dan, your old place, you go down that street, the drug dealer's there, uh, just after the, well, with the, with that new, new park in. He's sitting in there selling drugs to them every day. Nothing's done. Well, I, I, I was robbed here two weeks ago again while I was out of the house. Well, I know who done it, but I'm not going to report it, because I'm having two of my friends take care of the problem. And I told them, "All I want to do is break his both legs." This is your homeless, this is your mental problem. Ninety-five percent of everything out there is on drugs. And you're not going to stop it unless you get rid of them. And Bellflower ain't going to get rid of them because you got the, you got the seventy-two percent rental factor. So, keep them all here, contained, they know who they are. If you chase them out, they're going to Lakewood, now you're going to, Lakewood's going to be on you. So, the sheriff ain't doing nothing. It's time to go to the highway patrol and pay for somebody who's going to do something. Get rid of the sheriff.
Thank you, Mr. Butts.
But I'm going to take care of my own problems.
Thank you, thank you, sir. Anyone else? Okay, they're being known. We are moving on to the next item. There are no public hearings tonight. There are no ordinances and resolutions for consideration, and we have one consideration item, item thirteen A, or we have two. Consideration items, item thirteen A, Mr. Stewart.
Right, this is consideration possible action to authorize the mayor to execute a three-year employment agreement with Mr. Ryan Smoot in Formex, approved by the city attorney for city manager services. Fiscal impacts include without limitation, base compensation salary, and benefits and vehicle allowance. Um, the maximum IRS amount and medical disability and other fringe benefits, including without limitation CalPERS retirement's benefits. Um, I'm happy to recommend that you vote approval on this.
Any comments from my colleagues here on item thirteen A? No comments?
I'll make, I'll make-
No, no motion yet. Comments?
Comment, yeah, comment.
Okay, comments. Councilmember Dutton.
And, uh, yeah, item thirteen A is, uh, one that, I haven't been, anybody hasn't read between the lines, that, uh, our wonderful city manager, uh, Jeff Stewart has, uh, gave us, uh, um, notice that he was going to move on, retire. I'm kind of jealous, but, that, and then, uh, Ryan Smoot's, uh, name, uh, came up, and, uh, I've had, uh, some time on the dais here as, as him as a, a deputy, uh, working as a deputy in the city manager's office, I believe, and, uh, and got to see him grow. And he, he was with the city eight years ago, if I recall my numbers correctly. And, uh, he, uh, left here to, to move on, and, and, uh, the city manager encouraged him to go practice for an interview because our city manager thought maybe he'd be city manager material one day. And he went and interviewed in the city of Lomita, and ended up getting the job. And that was eight years ago. And it's kind of interesting how things come full circle and whatnot, and, and, uh, most of us up here know who Ryan is. And, uh, we went through an interviewing process and, and, uh, compensation package process, and, uh, come up with this and, and decided to put him on the agenda for a vote to replace, uh, Mr. Stewart. And I just want to say that, uh, Ryan, I've been in communication with him in the last eight years as he was working with the city of Lomita. And, uh, I really believe I have faith in the man to, uh, take over the helm of this city. And, uh, with the direction that I bought in, and my colleagues bought in with the city going, and me being up on the dais here for like fifteen years, as we took this city to pretty much bare bones, is what I remember when I got up here, to make it something that everybody brags about, uh, including the other cities. And they can't understand Bellflower, how they, we dug ourselves out. It was a lot of hard work, and, and, uh, so none of us up here take it lightly, replacing the city manager to take over what this team up here and the city manager, current city manager, has done. And, uh, so, uh, with that, I believe, uh, my colleagues have the same feelings about Ryan Smoot taking over and, uh, moving up in, uh, in the helm, and, uh, he has all our visions in him. He's watched this city grow, uh, when he was here. He's watched it from the outside looking in. And change is good as far as, uh, bringing other ideas and bringing a, a younger generation in than, uh, us old guys up here. And with that, that's my comments, and, and, uh, I look forward to voting on this.
Thank you, councilmember Dutton. Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I wasn't around when we, you know, when the city brought on Jeff, but I've gotten the, i- i- it's premature to, to try to talk about Jeff real quick, but it's, uh, I think to echo the comments made by councilmember Dutton, um, when the news broke out that, uh, Mr. Smoot was the viable candidate for our city, which was fairly recent, right, a couple of days ago, um, I got a lot of calls, I got a lot of messages, um, and everyone speaks very highly of Smoot. I got the privilege of, of seeing Smoot at a different city. Um, I knew, I know he was here before, and so it's just exciting to see him come back, and I'm looking forward to also voting on this. Um, I know he, he understands our vision, um, for the city. He knows that we work collectively, and he knows where our hearts are at, and so, um, excited to vote on this item. And at the same time, you know, again, premature, but, uh, it's, uh, it, it's bitter, it's a small bittersweet moment, right? Um, losing someone like Jeff as well. So, I'll stop my comments there, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, councilmember Sanchez. Uh, councilmember Morris?
Being new, I'm sad to see Jeff go because I look forward to working with him. But, um, after our interview process, I'm excited to see the, the change that will come. I hope all of you are too. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Protem Koops.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're excited to know that the city has never been in a better financial place, or all the things that have been developed, like Mr. Dutton said, in the last fifteen years have really improved the place. And, uh, not to dwell on Mr. Stewart leaving, but he said himself, "A good time to leave is when I'm really hitting a thousand, when I'm really doing well, city's doing well, and I can leave this place in a better situation than I found it." And that all makes sense, and besides the fact that he said, "I am willing to turn the reins of the city management over to somebody else, but I would like to know who that would be, and I, and I have some suggestions." Ryan worked here at the city seven or eight years ago, like was mentioned, did an exceptional job. Did so well that when he interviewed in Lomita, which, as Mr. Dutton mentioned, was just to go to, for the experience of interviewing for his city, he was so persuasive and so enthusiastic, he got the job. So, he's been there for the last seven or eight years, and he's learned even more about city management than what he learned here in Bellflower. So, we're lucky to be able to have a candidate like him wanting to come back to the city of Bellflower, who knows our department heads, who knows our streets, he knows the sheriff's department, he knows the fire department. He can come to our city knowing how we exist and what we've accomplished and how we got here. And so, when we put together this package to try to allure him to come from Lomita, uh, we were hopeful that he would take it, and he has accepted what we have offered. And we're willing to give him a three-year contract because we believe that he's going to continue to move our city in the right direction, upward. Um, when I got on the, uh, council several years ago, I believe our reserves were about eight or nine million. Now, they're closer to forty-five or fifty million. So, we have some money behind us now that we'd never had before. We have, uh, asked to try to improve our, we all run on the basis of public safety. And we've even allocated extra money to hire more sheriff deputies to patrol our city, but we can't obtain them because there's a shortage of personnel with the sheriff deputies, uh, being reluctant to take those jobs. So, what we have in the budget places for us to improve even better than what we have now because we have the money behind us. Things like when we go to a meeting and they recognize that we've got a Golden Corral, we got a In-N-Out, we got a Fire Museum, we've got a event center. Things that were never even thought of prior to Mr. Stewart coming, and there were, and that's just the tip of the iceberg. We've got even better things coming. One of the things I remember about the interview that we conducted with Ryan several weeks ago was he looked at us and he said, and we said to him, you know, can you, city managers have a tough job. They have to be able to say to us, when we come to with an idea, "Yeah, that'll work," or "Maybe it won't," or "Maybe this'll hurt us, maybe it's good." But they have to regulate what ideas we come up with that may not really be suitable at the time. But he's got to, they have to be able to say no to us, is what I'm trying to say, and still maintain the job. And I, being as young as Ryan is, and he looks at the average age here, now, our friend Victor at the end brings the average age way down, because he's eighteen years old. No, but he's, I want to just looks like. He grew the beard, so he looks like his age, so he's thirty. So, but basically, Ryan said to me, "Can you guys came up with me?" You know, "I'm going to have some really great ideas for the city, and I want to implement them, and I know how to build on what Jeff's put aside and put forth." And so, to be able to make him an offer like this, which we're very proud of, and I'm sure there's a dozen cities that would love to have him come and be their city manager. We're so lucky, we're so happy, for lack of a better term. No one else was considered for this position. When Ryan interviewed with us, we knew it was a fit. And the enthusiasm he showed to try to come back to our city and build on what Jeff has put in order is truly enthusiasm. And so, hopefully, we'll get this approved tonight. He's with us tonight, him and his family. They're going to watch us, uh, put this together, and after the first of the year, Mr. Stewart will, uh, exit with his pension. And, uh, we're going to start a new chapter in the city of Bellflower's history, and, uh, looking forward to it. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Protem Koops. Um, I'm not going to say any, anything more about Ryan because, um, I'm concerned that, uh, the price tag may just go up. Uh, but let me just kind of dwell on Mr. Stewart for a moment. Um, uh, Mr. Stewart, I know this is not your night yet, but I may, I may just say that, um, you're leaving a legacy in the city of Bellflower. Uh, you've done a marvelous job, uh, more than what I expected from the get-go. Uh, the improvements that, uh, we've seen here, both in terms of public safety, economic development, the homeless, no matter how people think about it, um, we made big strides under your leadership, and, uh, we will miss you. Uh, so, to move on to Ryan, uh, I, I'm not, I'm not so sure. I think he's qualified, but, um, I just, I have a lot of bruises during the negotiation. I was bruised so much because he's a top negotiator.
Must have been self-inflicted.
Well, well, I'm a negoti- negotiator too, so.
All right.
And, and, and secondly, I'm, I'm not so sure about, um, on a personal note, I, I don't want to lose a friend. If I vote for you, I will lose a friend. What I'm saying is, um, uh, my friend Mark Waronek, I think as soon as you told him that you are leaving for Bellflower, he texted me, and it was very, the message was very cryptic. It says, "We cannot be friends anymore." That's all he said. And you know, whatever, you know, how I responded, I said, "You should be thankful that we let you borrow him for seven years." So, anyway, um, Ryan, um, we look forward to working with you. As mentioned earlier, you have done a marvelous job in the city of Villa Park, Bellflower, and Lomita. And it's just so exciting, uh, to turn the page from, from Jeff to you, uh, because Jeff basically has, um, has high regards on you. He speaks highly of you, and, um, uh, we value, we valued Jeff's, um, um, Jeff's recommendation. And, uh, you interviewed well, um, you presented yourself well, and you have a great vision for the city of Bellflower. And, uh, and I think that Bellflower will continue its march towards progress. So, I look forward to the vote. All right.
Ready for a motion?
I'm ready, Mr. Mayor Protem. Would you like to do the honors?
I will make a motion to approve the consent item to offer Mr. Smoot the package that was presented.
Second.
A motion by Mayor Protem Koops, seconded by councilmember Sanchez to approve the staff recommendation to hire, um, Ryan Smoot as city manager. Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Koops?
Aye.
Councilmember Dutton?
Aye.
Councilmember Morris?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Santiness?
Aye. Congratulations, Ryan, and we look forward to seeing you. January second. All right, or sooner. Sooner, yeah, sooner, sooner. All right, next item, Mr. Stewart.
This is consideration of possible action to consider modification application for one existing cannabis business permit for dispensary use at NC three systems, doing, but doing businesses deli by caliva. And the recommendation is to approve the modification application for one existing cannabis permit. And I believe Mr. Seis has a staff report for you.
Honorable mayor, members of the city council, this item, before you deny it, was actually-
Honorable mayor, members of the city council, this item before you tonight was actually on the consent agenda on October twenty-third, twenty-twenty, at the regular city council meeting. Um, there were some questions that came up regarding the ownership of the permutee. So, um, that item was then moved to this meeting to be considered, so the applicant could get some more information on the ownership of the permutee. Tonight, we do have, um, the permutee here to answer any additional questions. They also provided some additional information regarding the ownership of NC3 Systems. So I'm actually gonna put that up on the screen, and then we have, um, it's Greg Gammet, um, who's part of the permutee to answer any questions on the, uh, additional information provided.
Before we do that, can we swear him in?
Yes, ma'am.
And anyone else would like to speak on this item? Uh, is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? We need to swear you in. So no one from the public? Okay?
Thank you, mayor. Um, if you'll please raise your right hand. Uh, do you solemnly state under penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give in the matter pending before the city council shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, and then Greg, you can actually begin.
I do, thank you. I, I couldn't make it to the last meeting. I had, I had a, a family ordeal I was dealing with, but I'm glad to be here tonight. I'm the chief cannabis, chief, uh, compliance officer for the cannabis company Goldflora Corporation, which is a public company. Um, we've merged with, uh, the parent company. Uh, this happened last quarter. And we're going through cleaning up all licenses, getting all the ownership stuff, and I, uh, Mindy spoke last time, and, and she's more on the operation day-to-day side. Uh, and I'm, and stuck in the corporate office reviewing contracts and stuff like that, and, and working closely with the CEO and CFO on, on ownership structure, which we had to submit to the SEC and everything else for approval in the state of California. So I'm here to answer any questions, um, and we made these flow charts to make it a little bit easier. Corporate, uh, corporate ownership structure, uh, I mean, there's lawyers that specialize in it, so it's not easy to comprehend. Um, I've even had to have a couple refresher courses here in the last couple of months as we went through these transitions. So if you have any questions or concerns, I'm here to alleviate those.
Okay, let me just, uh, go directly to, can you go pull up the twenty-twenty-three, um, organizational chart? Okay, um, educate me here.
Okay.
In terms of shareholders, so I can understand, um, from, just from the benefit of our listening public, NC3 is the permutee. It's wholly owned by CMG Partners, Inc., correct?
Yes.
And CMG Partners is wholly owned by TPCO U.S. Holding LLC.
Yes.
So it's straight ownership, okay? So now, um, last, the last, um, hearing we had in twenty-twenty-one, TPCO Holding, TPCO U.S. Holding LLC is owned, was owned by TPCO Holding Company, correct?
Until the merger, yes.
In twenty-twenty-one, until the merger?
Yes.
All right, so first question here is, the shareholders here?
Yeah.
How come this one doesn't add up to hundred percent? Who owns the rest?
Well, there's, there's small shareholders that, um, are, are layered underneath those, and that, that's not the public entity portion. Those, if you look under number one there, the, uh, the C E D E and the CEO is owned by the DTC participants, who the, it's a bank and brokerage firm. So.
So they own twenty-one percent and some change?
This is not the entity who owns Goldflora shares, like a shareholder, but they, they have a vested interest, uh, above and beyond that.
Can, can you, can you clarify that? So twenty-one percent, who owns twenty-one percent? It's a C E, C E D E?
Well, it's, it's many people, so there's no one person that does, so we're only required.
Twenty-one percent is owned by C E D E as a group?
If you add all those up, yes.
So twenty-one percent, okay. The next owner is?
Well, it's, it's, well, Goldflora Capital is involved in there too, so that's all layered under Goldflora Corporation as well.
Uh, uh, no, I'm, I'm sure yet here, because in a corporation, it has to be hundred percent owned. Okay, these four, they don't sum up to hundred percent. So where's the rest?
So Lori Holcomb, uh, is the only owner that's over twenty percent.
No, 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 I'm not to ask, I mean, the question, I'm asking that. If you add all these percentages here, right?
Can you point at what, the ones that are the, the top right?
Twenty-one, twenty-one percent plus six percent, that's twenty-seven. Plus another five point eight, that's another six, roughly six, that's thirty-three, plus another twenty, that's fifty-three percent. Where's forty-seven percent?
That is, it might be a clerical error. I'd have to look at that one, because Goldflora Capital, twenty-five, twenty-six, C E D, twenty-one. So those are two separate lines, so that adds up to more than twenty-one percent. The top line's twenty percent, the partners are six, Canaccord Corporation's five point eight, and the Goldflora Capital is twenty point five one four.
Okay, that's only fifty-three. Where's the forty-seven?
That's shareholders that own stocks, that own, if you go down the next line here, so the Odyssey Trust Company and the holders of CMG Partners Incorporated is Goldflora's transfer agent, so they're.
Where's that, are you reading where?
At number two.
Okay.
On the right-hand side. Canaccord Brokerage Firm is like Charles Swab, so they're, they're not a shareholder. They have vested interest, and then Goldflora Capital LLC, which Lori Holcomb is our CEO, is the only one with over, uh, twenty percent ownership, which is fifty-one percent ownership after the merger.
I think it's not, it's, it's public?
Yeah, we're a public company.
So the rest is public?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, but it doesn't, see, what I'm getting at is, they should show it as what percentage is only public. So we don't even know, we're guessing.
Well, I, I could tell you that the stock ownership changes every day as shares.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Okay, yeah.
I know, I understand, I, I.
And sometimes shares release. Yeah, yeah.
I do trading.
I know, I know, I know your background, you're accountant, so you're much probably more versed in this than I am.
I do trading, so.
Yes.
But the bottom line is, a corporation has to be owned hundred percent by someone. And we, see, you're not showing it here. Odyssey is a, is a, is a trust.
Yeah.
As agent for former holders of CMG Partners. So they own six percent, right?
Six point three, yeah.
Six point three percent. Okay, and Canaccord, which is a broker, like Swab, they hold, they hold five point eight percent.
Correct.
Correct?
Mm-hmm.
And then Gold Flora, Goldflora LLC hold twenty percent.
Yep.
So.
Well, I, I could get you a number on the rest of the shareholders, that's, it's a public company.
That's what I was asking from the last meeting, sir.
Okay, I, I reviewed it. Um, I could set up a meeting with my CFO if, if you'd like to.
Is it, is it difficult to get?
No, it, it's a, it's a, it's a little bit of a moving target, because shares trade and stuff like that. People can be major shareholders.
Sir, I understand.
Yeah.
You have shares.
Mm-hmm.
They're trading, but the bottom line, at the end of trading day, is still the number of shares.
Yeah.
Okay? The shares change hands. Okay, but the number of shares are still the same, unless the company issued additional shares.
Which we have.
That's different.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's still hundred percent. Don't tell me that trading affects the number of shares. It doesn't.
No, no, I'm just saying it affects ownership percentages. Yeah, yeah.
I'm not, at, at this point, I'm not, I'm not looking for who owns, I just want to know who owns the rest of the forty, forty-seven percent.
Okay, I.
Because how can we say that there was no change, significant change in ownership, if you cannot even tell us, tell me, who owns forty-seven percent?
That would be the public who owns shares, but I, I can, I can get you that information. I didn't know that's exactly what you're looking for, so I put these flow charts together, so it'd be.
To continue the item, there's way too much information that we need to bring back, because he doesn't have the information you're looking for.
Right, uh-huh.
And if he says he can get it, then we should give him the chance to get it, and we should bring it back at the next meeting.
So let me just, I, I don't want to waste your time, sir, and our time too. What's difficult with the question? Is there, can I, can I help you?
No, there's no difficulty. It's clear now that I'm standing in front of you and, and speaking with you. I, uh, reviewed last week, and I thought this would be, the last meeting I reviewed with, uh, Mindy, who was the presenter, and I thought this would clear it up, so, um, I could, uh, send you another, another packet.
All right, so do you understand what the mayor's asking?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, he wants to know what the total amount of the outstanding shares are.
You can provide that information by the next meeting.
Absolutely, I can provide it to you by the end of business tomorrow.
That's fine.
If you can, if you can confirm or verify or tell us that forty-seven percent is owned by individual shareholders, that's okay. But at least we know that they are owned by shareholders. But right now, you, I'm sure you don't know.
I could tell you, but I want to make sure I'm a hundred percent accurate, because I'm, and, and so I'll get that number to you.
Be better if you got it to Travis earlier than later, so we can review it and we can correct, course correct, because we certainly don't want to go through this again, in a meeting.
I agree.
It's already painful enough, right, so, okay. Can we hear this November twenty-seventh then?
November twenty-seventh.
If you can provide Travis the information before, sir, if you can provide Travis with the information beforehand.
I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get him that information very quickly.
I want to make sure that, once we are in the meeting on twenty-seven, it is clear already.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
Yeah, I'll get your, uh, contact information from the office, but, all right, I appreciate your time tonight. I apologize, we weren't complete in our information with you. We'll get that for you.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, is there a motion to continue this item for the twenty-seventh?
Move it, second.
Motion by Council, by Mayor Protem Koops, seconded by Councilmember Sanchez to continue this item for November twenty-seventh. Uh, roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Koops?
Aye.
Councilmember Dutton?
Aye.
Councilmember Morse?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Santiness?
Aye.
All right, moving on to consent calendar, any, does anyone have any conflicts on the consent calendar?
Mr. Mayor, I am out on, uh, fourteen B.
Fourteen B?
Because I have property near Constitution Park, so I won't be a part of that.
Okay, fourteen B.
No conflict, Mr. Mayor, on my end, but I'd like to pull item B.
Item B, okay, all right.
Mayor Protem, uh.
Councilmember Morse?
I have no conflicts.
No conflicts? Uh, do you want to pull any item?
I do not.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Dutton?
I'm good as it is.
Okay, all right, we'll pull, um, item fourteen, fourteen B.
And I'll go out of the room.
Let the record reflect that, uh, Mayor Protem Koops is, uh, refuses, is himself on this item.
Mr. Mayor, I, uh, just, uh, want to highlight, uh, item B and the importance of it. You know, we've been working on, on, uh, on these three projects, Constitu- Constitution Park revitalization, and then the Brim, the Brim vehicle replacement, and then of course the Aquatic Center, uh, pool improvement. So I just want to highlight that for the community, that this is a, uh, uh, basically delivering those funds, so that we can go ahead and do those, uh, remodelings and, uh, improvements to our community. And I just wanted to make the community aware of it. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, okay, I just want to piggyback on that. I think most of this, um, the funding came from, to the, to the work of, um, Congressman Linda Sanchez, uh, to make sure that we have this, our fair share, uh, for our community. All right? So with that, we can call in, um, Mayor Protem Koops. That was quick. Let the record reflect that, uh, Mayor Protem Koops has joined the council meeting. Did you even get a chance to sit?
Very brief.
Very brief, okay, that's what I thought. All right, is there a motion to, uh, approve the re- the rest of the consent calendar?
Move, move the balance of the consent calendar.
Second.
Uh, motion by Councilmember Dutton, seconded by Mayor Protem Koops to approve the consent calendar. Uh, roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Koops?
Aye.
Councilmember Dutton?
Aye.
Councilmember Morse?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Santiness?
Aye.
All right, council reports. Uh, Mayor Protem Koops.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to adjourn this meeting in memory of a good friend of mine who passed away. And I'll give you a little information on his life, and you'll be amazed. And, uh, I'm gonna adjourn our meeting this evening in memory of Delmar Shank. He was born March ten, nineteen thirty-one. He passed away October fifth, two thousand twenty-three. He was ninety-two years old. Delmar was born on a farm in Dune, Iowa, and was the youngest of four children. And, uh, his, he was schooled in a one-room schoolhouse. And at the age of fourteen, his parents moved from Iowa to Buena Park, where they, uh, had a chicken ranch. And, uh, he worked there for quite some time. A little history of Bellflower, there was a large chicken ranch, and that would be located on Rosecrans and Woodruff. And that would be on the, uh, north, no, southwest corner, where that shopping center is now. That was a, a big chicken ranch, and he worked there as a, as a kid, going to Bellflower High. He met his li- wife, uh, Marla, while cruising the Boulevard, uh, nineteen fifty-one. And, um, they were married nineteen fifty-one, and they first resided in Lakewood, and then they moved to Bellflower and raised their four children. Uh, Delmar had a passion for working with wood, and he's, he worked for Adler Construction for eighteen years, and then he became self-employed contractor for nineteen years. And at sixty-two years old, he, uh, retired from his own company and turned his passion for working with wood into a hobby. Uh, Delmar, uh, built basically the home that I lived in in nineteen eighty-one, uh, remodeled and built and doubled the size of it, and, uh, my wife learned to get up every morning at seven AM, because Delmar was standing there with a work crew, ready to come in and, uh, shake it up, so, uh, but he got the whole work done in like ninety days, so it was, it was wonderful. Um, Delmar enjoyed cheering for the Dodgers, uh, riding his bike, having coffee with his friends, golfing, traveling, being a grandfather and a great-grandfather, went to his funeral service. What was interesting, Delmar and his wife Marla took trips to Hawaii. Now, it was never said he had a timeshare there, but he did, visited Hawaii seventeen times in the last twenty years. So like every year, he would go to Hawaii, so he must have liked it there. So, uh, Delmar leaves behind a loving family, includes his wife Marla, who's still with us to this day, and lives here in Bellflower, and his children Gary and Renee, and Diane and Vic, and Karen and Robert, nine grandchildren, sixteen great-grandchildren, as well as countless friends who benefited from knowing him. And, uh, our deepest sympathies and heartfelt condolences go out to the Shank family. Just a good guy, always around Bellflower, did a lot of construction, built houses, built houses, commercial buildings, apartments, churches. Just a, a real asset to our community. He lived a great life, ninety-two, he had no regrets. Several years ago, um, during the COVID, I presented to him, uh, commendation for being married seventy years and for turning ninety years old, did that in his living room. And so I wanted to make sure that we kind of, uh, had some conclusion on his life here in Bellflower, and asked respectfully to adjourn our meeting tonight in his memory. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Koops. Um, Councilmember Dutton?
I don't have any comments tonight, mayor.
Okay, uh, thank you, Councilmember, um, uh, Victor Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, uh, I'll, I'll leave the highlights to, uh, to you, but I do want to just thank staff, Parks and Rec staff, PJ Milano and his team, they've been very busy, um, this last couple of, uh, weeks for some of the events that we've been a part of, so just want to thank them. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'll leave it at that.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Sanchez. Uh, Councilmember Morse?
I have no comments.
Oh, okay, so I guess I have to make up for your non-comment.
Yeah, you can surrender her time.
Yes, okay, all right, very good. Yeah, again, I want to piggyback on Councilmember Sanchez's comment, uh, regarding Parks and Recreation. They were so busy, uh, this week and last week. First of all, we had the, the wonderful Veterans, um, celeb- event celebration. Uh, it was well-attended, uh, well-organized, uh, thank you staff for that. And also, the, um, this afternoon, we officially opened the, um, the new playground at Thompson Park. Uh, again, thanks to Parks and Rec and the public, public work staff for making it happen. It, it is a wonderful thing. And then tomorrow, again, Parks and Rec staff will be very busy. Tomorrow is the, uh, reception and judging of the photo contest. Uh, it will be at five o'clock here at the lobby of City Hall, so we invite you to please come and join us, uh, celebrate, uh, the, um, there are six finalists for the youth division, and then six finalists for the adult division, and they will select three top winners for each division. So again, it's five PM tomorrow at the lobby of City Hall. And then, um, last Thursday, we, um, um, we did, um, ribbon-cutting open and, and, and grand opening ceremony for Paint and Shop. Uh, it's the Art and Craft Store on Bell, Bellflower Boulevard, located on West Six, Eight, One, One, Bellflower Boulevard, and we welcome the new, the owners of this new shop in Bellflower. And finally, um, uh, I'd like to mention that the video recording of this year's State of the City presentation is now available, uh, for public viewing on the city's YouTube channel. The video will also be posted on the city's website, and is set to air on Spectrum Cable, channel thirty-six prior to the airing of the city council meetings to December ninth. The approximate earrings and times are Tuesdays and at six PM, Thursdays at ten AM, and Saturdays at ten AM. And, um, finally, uh, we're adjourned this meeting in memory of Delmar Shank to the next regular meeting of Bellflower City Council at five thirty PM on Monday, November twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three. This meeting is now adjourned.